Welcome everyone here tonight. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to ask for Mr. Lewis if he would lead us in prayer.
Go through the prayer request.
Yes, sir, please.
All right. Prayer requests for the night for Anthony Guest and his father has passed away. Candy Lehman, her husband passed away. Ms. Diane Shelders, everybody remember her, and Danny Claire, as well as the students, teachers, principals, and staff, everyone returning to school. Is there any additions that we'd like to add to the prayer list?
Put Jeff Hudson on there.
Say again?
Jeff Hudson.
Jeff Hudson?
Put him on there.
Remember my daddy, he's called the doctor of martyrs, get it get it before. All right, sir. Any one else?
Keep my wife in mind, her mother passed away.
All right, sir.
Couple of weeks ago.
Any one else?
My mother's in the hospital with Mike Penner in there.
All right, sir.
Who, Lord?
My mother.
Anyone else? All right, be available, please. Father, we're coming for you. We're so grateful for the state that you've given us and all the gifts and things that you've allowed us even though we're undeserving. We'd ask that you would watch over all these people who've been named on prayer lists because we believe that you hear us and that you answer us when it is in your time, not necessarily ours. We'd ask that you guide us in all of our comings and goings and help us treat one another like brothers and sisters in this place and give us courage and strength always to say and do the right things in the wisdom to know when to say and do them. We'd like to ask your forgiveness for all the times that we fail you because we know that we do so daily, but at the same time, we're so grateful for your gift salvation and forgiveness that we have. That's that you would be with us through tonight's meeting, that we make decisions that are proper for our school system and everyone involved in it. All of these things we must only ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Ladies and leakers.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our list tonight is consent items. We've got four minutes and we've got permission for the, to attend the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis. Do I have, I hope you've all had a chance to go over your package. Do I have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? Not its roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Seven. Yes. Superintendent's actions. Anything y'all need to discuss on that and want to look at? Not, it's going to new business, policy amendment 4.403. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Policy amendment 6.200. Motion? Motion approved. Second. John, Mr. Apple. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Next item is bid approval for food service pizza concept program. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go out a second. Second. Any discussions? If not, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Seven. Bid approval for choice of synthetic or wood floors for the gyms that defeated Forks River and Union Heights schools. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Jones?
Second.
Mr. Apple. Mr. Jones, Mr. Apple. Pardon?
Does the, oh, does each school have the same need for the different same floor?
Oil on it.
Yeah, I think that's something, this is probably time to discuss it. That's one reason I asked David to come. I think some schools are wanting the synthetic, two schools are wanting a synthetic, one is wanting the wood. Now, if that's something that y'all can discuss, tell us what you want to do. But I think, I think, Scotty, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think Forks River's wanting the woods, my understanding.
That's correct.
And the other two are wanting the synthetic, so.
Well, I'll say it a different way. Forks River is asking for what the community's asking for.
Listen. Wait, what does, what does the school want?
Wood.
Wood. Okay, I think so, what the community wants, you know.
Well, I don't, I mean, I understand you're saying that I represent the community, so I'm just saying that's.
Yeah, I'm just saying that what, I would listen to what the school would want, you know, I'd listen to it.
That's what I've been told.
And the question is, can we mix it? Can we do wood and other, other?
We've been a both ways.
Yeah, we've been a both ways.
That was going to be my, I'm glad we're discussing, that's going to be my discussion, what does the school want? And I think wherever the school want it is what they'll go with, because they're the ones that's going to have to, you know, upkeep it, you know. To me, wood would be a little bit more maintenance, you'd have to probably have some kind of tarp or floor color if you had your assemblies and stuff like that, but you know, if that's what the school wants to do and food rolling it out, I mean, it's all be, you know. But I mean, that was the only, only thing I had was whatever the school was wanting.
My, my question was, is why wouldn't we pay that much more for a wood floor over the, the other? I mean, it's what, sixty, seventy thousand dollars more for a wood floor?
That's twenty.
I think that's your entire, if you went completely Randy, I believe that's going to be slithering.
Twenty-two.
That's if you bid all three floors, wood or all three floors, it'd be that difference about the third. So you're, I like, I think I heard you went about seventeen, fifteen, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars when that rang, whatever it is.
Forks River was eighty thou, it's eighty thousand, four eighty-six, plus you'll have to pay for the raising of the goals, because that sets higher up, so all the goals have got to be raised. And they give me a price on that, I think it was around three thousand dollars and, and I think they were just figuring two goals for three of those fours, so it'll be a little bit more than that to raise though.
But synthetic there is sixty-one six, so it's not eighty thousand dollars difference.
Yeah, it's about twenty thousand.
Yeah, about twenty, twenty-two, yeah.
That's where I saw something.
Twenty thousand more for, for a wood floor.
Well, I mean, the only thing, are you asking me?
I'm just asking anybody. I mean, I, I don't see why we would spend that much more for a wood floor over the synthetic. And, you know, the synthetic, it's probably not going to scuff as easy as the wood or the day.
Well, I mean, the synthetic ones I've looked at have scuffed and the principals aren't talking, they couldn't get it off. I guess it probably is long. All I'm asking for, that I've been asking for for a year, is if they receive what they've asked for.
I'll say let's just get what each school wants.
Yeah. I mean, they're the ones that's going to have to maintain it, keep it up and whatever.
Don't disagree, I'm just saying, same thing that I asked for for a year, which is what they've asked for.
Any more discussion? We're got it. We're got it. First and second for self. Oh, we got this discussion, so if there's any more?
I'll need to amend that to specify.
No, I wouldn't say, I mean, it pretty well written what you made a motion for and it was second, that's why it's, it's written here, you know. So we thought you needed me.
As long as it's clear that two is getting one floor at one price, one's getting one floor at one price, that's clear in the, that's fine. If there was an option for the board, just need to make it clear which goes.
Go that way.
It certainly wouldn't hurt to amend it.
Could we amend?
Okay. I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To Forks River to have wood floors defeated in Union Heights, just the.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
No.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Seven. Okay, let's go on to special education contracts for 2022, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second. Any discussion? If not, just have a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Seven. Next thing on the agenda is the election for board chair and board vice chairman.
Board chair, I have a recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Get the board to hear me out, then they can get a second, then you do, if don't, we don't. I, I would like to ask that the board consider that our current chairman remaining in place for more than one reason, and I'll say what those are. Number one, he's conducting meetings in a real professional manner and we get through them and get our business done and all that. Number two is his availability to the director of schools in his position where he's retired. I know that there's a lot of times that the director asks him to look at something with him so that there's no confusion when they come back to the board, and he's able to do that because he's retired, which is a unique circumstance for rest of us. So for those reasons, that he's done a good job in his availability to help the director look at things and come back and give, you know, that way nobody says the director's coming in here and saying X, Y, Z, you know, we've got two sets of eyes on him. So I will make a motion that Mr. Shelders retain that position, and those are my reasons why.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion?
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
What is our normal protocol? I've only been in this position for two years, so I don't really know what our normal protocol is to that, because you've been in the seat the entire time, so I'm just.
Well, our board po, we're not following board policy. Board policy states that you're supposed to elect a new chairman every year, and it's supposed to be the vice chairman, it's supposed to step up to the chair position, and we're supposed to elect a new vice chairman, and you're supposed to rotate. That's the policy.
And somebody, and I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you Tommy, I just haven't seen that. Is that somewhere Mr. Attorney? If I'm, if I'm asking, making a motion properly, I would.
I would look at the policy if you want to pass it, well, I would look at the policy. While if you want to go into other business, I would look at the policy.
It, it started with me. It started with me as chairman. First year I was chairman, I broke the cycle. I was elected chairman for the second year, and therefore since then, and I think Mr. Shelders does a good job. I think he's wrong. I think he does a good job, but I think we're going to continue down this road, maybe we better look at changing our policy or something.
And there's not a policy you have that you can't.
Right, we make the policies.
You make the policy, so certainly doing what you're doing is fine if that's the board's wish, but Mr. Manning may be saying it's correct, you may want to look at providing the board policy, just so it conforms with what you've been doing.
Because there's, it used to, years ago, always kind of rotate around where everybody could have an option to be the chairman. And I've sat in that seat for two years, and I'm telling you, it's hard to sit in that seat, because that's, where we're from, we're on districts, you hear what goes on in your district. When you're sitting right there, you hear what goes on in the whole entire county, because that's the one we're calling, calling for. I'm just saying, I'm not going to take a look at our policy.
Well, if I'm not doing anything that violates the policy, then I'm not going to change my motion.
Well, the policy would say what it says, but again, your board policies are your board policies. If that is the desire of the board, you can do that. I think what Mr. Manning's probably saying is if that's what the board is going to do, you might want to look to amend that policy.
If I understood you right, Tommy, you're saying that the, the second time you said through it, we kind of broke the policy cycle at that time.
It broke with me.
And it, and it's been continuing forward ever since then, so basically.
Twenty-two, roughly.
If we violate the policy, it goes back that many years, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and then sometimes you have people that don't, you sit on a board and nobody wants to speak, chairman, because I'm, I'm telling you, you hear it all.
I'm glad he's in, I just feel like that, but I'm asking you, Mr. Attorney, as I've got a motion and a second, are we liable to proceed to that, or do we?
I believe, I believe that you are.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Tommy.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're going to elect a vice chairman, and I would like to nominate Mr. Lewis. He and I have had a good working relationship, haven't had any problems, and I'm making a motion that for him to be the vice chairman.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion, y'all?
Yeah, I do.
I'm the chair.
Chairman, now listen, we're all on this board trying to do the same thing. Titles don't mean whatever, I mean, you know, Randy, if you've got something, you're going to bring it, you're going to bring it up, and I know Joe all the way around the table, so it doesn't matter. So what I'm telling y'all is, it's been a privilege to me to serve you in this role. I hope, I hope I've done a good job when Rick has not been here, but if, if you don't agree with that, and you want to change something, then you're not going to hurt my feelings. All I've done is sit here and try to do the best I could with it, so that's, that's totally up to y'all. I'm, I'm good to do if you want me to, but that's at y'all's will and pleasure. I appreciate the nomination, second, but again, it's at y'all's will and pleasure.
No more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I will say that I would like for Jamie to get us all that paperwork out of that, and if we want to change that policy, we can before the next election rolls up and vote on it. Is there one other?
And I mean, Mr. Manning is correct, it's been going, you've had the same chairman for several years, or the last year for several years.
So if, would you, would, if we are, I want, we need to get changed.
Yes, and I, and maybe the same thing without a difference, but I don't know that you're violating so much as going outside it, and if you're going to continue to go outside it, you want to make a change.
Yes, sir.
Well, and that's a benefit, Mr. Attorney, that, you know, you've got Scotty, Tommy, that's been here for a long time, and Joe has been here a long time, and Rick has been here once before and back again, you know, we have that knowledge, I'm going to call you by other, but you know, as I'm hoping y'all are, but that we have that senior knowledge around this board, their calls and things, so Tommy, appreciate you bringing that up.
And I, I agree with Tommy a hundred percent. It was, the last time I was on there, it was, I wasn't, you had chairman and vice chairman, and then rolled a new chairman up, but I never did question it. This last time when I got on board, I thought, well, y'all changed something, we're done something different, so if we need to change something, we need to change something to get it right.
Yes, sir.
Everybody agreement on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, let's go on to the copying paper that we have set out a bid on. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Lewis, second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Jones?
Yes. What's up? Let me, sir, what are we voting at? You didn't.
Okay, it's for that copying paper.
Right, but we're voting on accepting what?
The lowest bid.
Oh, I didn't hear that part. And the lowest, the lowest bid is American paper, twenty?
Yeah, right.
We're requesting to use either vendor.
Your other one is local, one that's very close, I think is probably the question, and you, way they could, in terms of availability on that many cases, I think the question is to accept them both.
So no one answered the bid specs in the paper, because the market is so volatile right now, nobody will set a price, so neither of these prices are set. Next month, one of those companies may go up ten dollars a case or not. This gives the schools the right to shop around a little bit, and if they want to call both companies, they can order from whichever company is the cheapest, or you can pick a vendor, but if you pick a vendor, if they go up in price, we still have to be with them, so I don't know the answer to this.
This price is good for how long, Ricky?
Thirty. Thirty, yeah, this is, this was just current, whatever date I gave you the other day, they put it on up and out. They would not give me a.
They won't lock anything anymore.
There's nothing or now locking from tires to.
Mid-ten said they would sell us what they have in the warehouse at that price, but once they ordered more paper, they had no idea.
But I noticed, and I'm, just for, I guess Ricky knows, they, this company, Azor, has bought Mid-ten out.
Yeah.
So it's still, I mean, it's a locally run company, but it's has, it's been purchased by.
So you can, you can pick one vendor or you can let them shop both vendors, it's your, I guess.
I think you would.
Well, the flexibility would be, in that many cases, they didn't have it, one, the national plan, I was up here the other day, so.
That's a lot of cases.
Ricky, can we let them shop both, can we let them shop both and see who's got the best price at the time we need it?
That, that's what you said, yeah.
And as far as I know, Jamie, we, we can get two vendors, and we've always done one or four, but it makes sense to me to.
When they need paper, they'll just pick up the phone and call both of them.
That's fine, I'd be great, I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay, everybody's, we've got, we got a motion, second, let's have a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Apple?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Seven. Okay, we're going to go into discussion now on school enrollment numbers for this year, and I'm going to turn it over to Smith.
Enrollment numbers are at just a little, just not hardly a hundred, we're about dead on ninety, ninety-two students from last year, where we started and where we ended, which the majority of the growth is, I think, going from about forty to sixty, depending on the day that the two schools combined, middle school's up about twenty, and then we're either held. Nobody's really down, depending on the day, where, where we're at, all those schools are a couple up. We know we're growing. We said in here we're going, named about four hundred houses, we know that's, that it's going to be started or going up in the next few years. So I feel like it's very important for y'all to know that, we, we are about a hundred ten percent maxed out at going from seven to twelve. We knew the fork, or the, the new Milton split was temporary, about a five year, he's got, I think he's got one classroom left right now. And where you see girls, Thatcher, numbers are basically the same over there, but you've got five kindergarten classes going ahead to be there this year, so people, when they start, they start, most of them, they move young, they don't move after the kids get in high school and junior high. Again, we know the girls coming, we're going to have to start making some preparations. We've got a really good start, we've got everything, we've got a mixture of positions, others are suspicious of positions field, but we do need to start planning for the future. I said we're at about a hundred students, ninety-six students, so. That's Candy White. I'll make a comment or tell me.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I mean, all of y'all saying, just like I have, and we're experiencing the same thing down at work, but you know, there's a lot of folks moving this way, and we're going to address that pretty quick, and you look around everywhere, I've been paying attention since we started having these conversations, I've been conclusion, it's been candy, if you don't want to sew it, you burn up the sun in your yard, because somebody buy it before you get back in the door, which is not a bad thing, I mean, we're, population's growing, maybe it'll be trades and skills and jobs and all that, but I don't see how, I mean, we've got car the elementary up there that didn't get touched in renovation, I mean, it's more out right now. I don't know, we start, we don't start planning pretty soon, we're going to do any injustice to our children, we're not going to be able to serve, Forks River is all over the place. I went up there last year and had Drake pull it down between one classroom and try and teach on either side, it's just sad. I don't know, just, we're going to have a plan for it, it's coming, and I don't, it's like right now, we've got a dorm room filled down there where I work, because the rent on everything is so high, they've all headed to the doors. So it's coming this way, hot and heavy, and I don't know what else we can do except planning for it. The director of schools is a good friend of mine at Wilson County, and he's telling me, he said, Barry, you better be prepared, they're coming, and we're basically wanting to, we can't handle, and you know what, I'm working. I live in, it's, I do, it's coming, and we can prepare, and if we don't, I, I don't know, the state's going to come and do it for us, I would like, so.
Well, don't we think we've met that, Barry, don't you think we need to sit down with the education?
Yes.
Part of, of the county commission?
Absolutely.
And tell them what our needs are and what we want, and that, they're going to have it funded.
Yeah.
We can ask and ask and ask until they're funded, they're not going, we're not going to get anywhere until it's funded, so with that in, in tow, I think we need to set up a time to sit down with them and tell them what our needs are, and then hopefully they will agree.
They reside here too, just like everybody else in the spring, they're bound to be seen, just like we do.
Right, and, you know, let's get, instead of talking about it, let's get this ball rolling.
Well, the great thing about being in the state of Tennessee, with a school board as authority, all we have to do is say, we're building something, and by state law, the county has to fund it. Now, that ain't the roads you want to go down, like you want to.
Now, I want you to be, I want you to be agreeable with everybody, I don't want.
You know, there's an opportunity there that you could go down, and they got to realize that if we sit here tonight and vote to build something, by law, they have to fund it, so.
I understand, but.
That's the state of Tennessee law.
But what could happen, could happen, is, and I don't want this to happen, is the state walk in here and tell us what we're going to do, and that could happen too. And I'd like to, the board and the county itself to be able to have some kind of direction that we're going to go with this, instead of the state coming in here and tell us we're going to do this, this, and this. I mean, if the state walked in here and says, y'all don't need two high schools, you just need one, and that's what you're going to do, well, you might as well get the funeral home ready, because they're going to be full of people back. So, hey, you know, it's, we've got to look at the point that we don't want the state in here telling us what to do, we want to try to work something out with the commissioners that they will fund a project that will give us some relief and, and looks to me like, now, I don't know, but from what I can see, the numbers I can see, the problems in Gornville. You know, it looks like over this area, we're in pretty good shape, but it looks like Gornville's with the trouble.
Gornville's obviously popping, but you're, you're going to start getting, in my opinion, from the southern side, and, you know, the high school in Smith County is getting older, the elementary needs a lot of work, or it's in fantastic shape for its age, but like, that's part of renovation, they're going to use extra money on, you know, to update
but like, that's part of renovation, and we're gonna use Esther money on, you know, to update the cafeteria, and we can get somebody to do it, but, but we'll get it back, but it's still, the growth is coming, and it's gonna come, I think, the high school's up. God, what's it, about twenty students, is that right? The last call?
Uh, five, twelve, five, thirteen, eighty-four, ninety-eight, fifteen.
I think, I have two. But what I'm saying, you're seeing it across the county, and the only positive about the state coming in, they'll, they'll, they'll tell us when that Cadillac, you know, we'll have Cadillacs in it.
Right. But now, on the, plus, now, when you start, well, Scott's got twenty. Uh, well, yeah, he's gonna probably find the rooms to put them in, but what about your cafeterias? You know, what about?
Really works up cafeteria, as of today.
So, what'd you say? I didn't hear you, sir.
We have room to add twenty kids, no problem in the, in the hallways and classrooms. Cafeteria's packed.
And something's deceiving, because you can grow within, but your numbers get to a certain, you know, it's like filling a box up, you know? The boxes are being used, but those numbers can grow inside that box till they get full, but that's kind of where you're at. You know, New Milton's there, going over, to be honest with you, we're, we're happening by. This is probably the only school right here where we've got room, you know, quite a bit of growth, and everybody else is pretty much where they, where they need to be at.
Ricky, I know we're gonna, we're talking about the gyms coming to Carthage and Gornville, they're, we call them gyms, but they're really called health, what we calling them technically?
Yeah, wellness centers.
Can they be used as?
That's what they're gonna use theirs for, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to just to buy that. That's what they wanna use theirs for, right? He hopes you get about six classrooms in it.
So, let's just say the growth, you know, I'm not a doomsayer, but I'm trying to say, what if we level off right at this point, and we're gonna go to the looking building schools that we don't need or facilities?
You're not, you're not gonna level off.
Excuse me?
You're not gonna level off.
I can't, I understand.
I said, you're not gonna level off.
It's not gonna, it's just gonna get worse, worse.
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna argue about that, and I'm not saying.
Well, there's a house unit going up out there, they got the first person in it right now. Talked to, right out here, they're expecting another hundred, that's two hundred right there in one day. They get another, then I don't, suppose going back to three hundred. I mean, they're, they're coming, that ain't got nothing to do with whether we build a school or not, they're coming. They ain't asking my permission, or yours, they're gonna build it.
Our place has always increased and continued to increase.
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, sir.
What, as a board, just talking across the board here, what, what do y'all think? I think it'd be, I think it'd be less imprudent if we don't have a discussion with them and just say, this is kind of what we're seeing, this is kind of what we're anticipating, and start fostering that relationship, or we might have to hate it.
Where, where we need to go first is, as a board, we need to sit down and see what our needs are, and where our needs are at. Before we go meet the county commission, that way, I don't wanna go to the county commission and say, hey, we need money for some buildings, and they say, well, you wanna build them? We'll get back if you don't have. And, I mean, you wanna go and say, hey, this is what we say our needs is, this, 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 and we're asking y'all to have fun. And we need to get this ball rolling in the next year or something, you know, you know, how you gonna fund it? I, I think we'll have to make, say, I mean, there's, it's like Mr. Smith said, it's, it's south side of county's growing right now, but it ain't, it's not gonna stop there, y'all. It'll basically trickle on in, and then all of Smith County will be, or Wilson County here, maybe not that bad. You don't want to say. You got Wilson County sitting in there at Indian Heights, you got Wilson County touching over here, you know? It, it's coming now. How fast it's gonna come depends on probably the economy and how fast it get the houses built, if people are still buying. It's just like Mr. Lewis said, don't stick that for sale sign in the yard, cause, you know, it's, it's probably gonna go.
But, don't you agree if we could put a, a needs-based plan together, that, that'd be good, bring it on our part, just start.
And sit down with the county, discuss that. Yeah, we do, we need to sit down and see what our, our needs are, and.
And, and the universal calculator that they say to use is to use one point five per household students. That's what you're supposed to use when you're calculating the numbers coming. One point five, one point five per household.
And it might get down to the point, y'all, that this board might have to make some hard decisions, you know? If you've got a, and I'm, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we're gonna do this, but, you know, you might have one area that maybe don't have a lot of kids in the school, and they're flooding another area, I mean, there might be, have to be some hard decisions made somewhere down the road here. I mean, just because everybody's flocking to this one area to go to school, don't mean, hey, we gotta spend ovals and ovals and ovals of money to build another school, and say, hey, wait a minute.
Right.
After, and I'll say right now, I, I didn't like the deal we did at U Milton and Gornville, but when we did the deal, I mean, it's worked out good, but it was saying then, guys, that was a Band-Aid. That was a five-to-seven-year Band-Aid when we done it. You were sitting on the board at that time, and we made that harsh decision to do it, in my opinion, but it's turned out pretty well. Their test scores at U Milton's good, and, and it's, it's turned out well, of course, it, you know, hindsight, you know? But, uh, that was just a Band-Aid, and now they're busting at the same at U Milton, and we're busting at the same at Gornville.
Any more discussion? Not, we're gonna go on to our next discussion on dress code, which Smith, I'd like for you to kind of address that if you would, please.
Well, I think so, the board members, I know I did. Mr. Apple, I don't know, you're here, because I, I think we've asked you to be here just in case you and I talked throughout the week. Uh, the first day or two, they was, number one is a lot of rumors, okay? They, they weren't correct, because I talked to you about a couple of them. But, uh, we've got a dress code that is strict, but it's also written in a way that if it's considered detrimental or, uh, it's disruptive to the day, uh, we can take that person and we can discipline or put them outside. There's also, we're, we're not, there's a lot of things out there, we're not allowing kids to have like cats and dogs and so on and so on, if we know about it. I know I asked Mr. Apple about one, you didn't have any, I heard you had several, that they was for, but that's not true. You removed some stuff that wasn't appropriate, but it wasn't a cat and a dog.
No, I haven't. I haven't encountered that, my sister, for instance, hasn't encountered that. We've heard those rumors, I feel like we've been diligent looking forward, we haven't seen it. If we do, we'll take care of it, that's it.
Uh, and it also says our code of conduct, so, you know, if you're acting like an animal and you felt that was, obviously, I would if I was in a classroom, that would be affected, so, uh, was one particular school that I might have had one incident and they got took care of, and that is the only one that I was aware of, but I think we've got a great start. I, I warn our parents, this is my county, we're sure that's not something we're gonna accept, if we know it, and if we do, we'd like, if, if it is going on, we'd like to know it, because we don't know about it, okay? We appreciate it, because that's not what we want, where students have to be sitting in, and our teachers have to teach in that.
Mr. Smith, if you don't mind, I had actually sent and asked for this to be on the agenda along with the code of conduct. The reason was, I had been contacted by several teachers and six different students. And I assured them all that it would be on the agenda, and Mr. Smith addressed it tonight, and, and just getting started in things, but what they were reaching out to me about was, uh, it was disruptive in the classroom for them to be, people be responding to questions with either barking or, yeah, which, you know, our code of conduct and everything else addresses that, and he just said, you know, anything like that would be addressed. So, you know, I wanted to know, and I'm just pretty sure the parents and the students, yes, we, we do have policies and procedures for this, and yes, we're going enforcement, and yes, we've got people placed to do it, as long as the teachers, somebody makes them aware of it and all this stuff, but I, it kind of touched me a little bit that that many students reached out, you know what I mean? That it, and it wasn't all from the same bloody suit, it was from one side to the other. And I promised them that we would have it on here tonight, even though I know how y'all feel about it, I made you a promise, so that's why I asked for it to be on here. So, I appreciate y'all's listening, Mr. Smith, about it.
No more discussion, anyone? If not, let's go on to the next discussions on feeding schooling qualities, and I asked that, Richard Smith, have Ms. Dyer here tonight to, uh, talk about this.
I've, I've asked Ms. Dyer and Mr. Smith for both, and I think you researched normal from R S to the state office owners. Stevie, do you know more logistics of the day-to-day funding, because it's gonna cost over all between you two? I could sit here and tell you, there are hands-on where I've been involved, but I'll let whichever one of y'all wanna talk first, see if you wanna talk first.
So, when the topic was put on the board agenda, I just reached out to the State Department just to get some guidance from them to see if that is allowed. And because we are a federally funded program, that is not allowed. That would be considered kind of debt for us, and we cannot incur debt in the National School Lunch Program. And so, I have the reg to, that you guys can have a copy of, but one area it just talks about is meals served to adults are neither eligible under the authorizing legislation and regulation for federal cash reimbursement, nor do they earn donated food assistance for the school food authority. So, they are revenue, all of our adult meals are revenue for our program, and because of that, they would be considered debt if we were serving them free. Uh, just a few more concerns that I had regarding that. We already have a hard time getting employees, and if we went to feed all the adults free, we would have, probably have to hire several more employees throughout the district and, and all the, the schools. We actually have some opening positions now that we're just having a hard time filling, and that would put a lot of more stress on the employees that are there. Chicken strip day is a huge day for us, and if you've never eaten with us, please come and eat chicken strip day, because it is wonderful. But, that day alone is very stressful, so if we were doing it every day, obviously, we would have to have more employees to service those adults. Uh, the next thing that we were thinking about is supply issues. We, you know, pre-COVID, supply issues, food supplies probably wouldn't be an issue at all, but now that we're in the area that we're in, we are having a lot of supply issues, a lot of food shortages, and I just feel like if we were increasing our numbers of the people that we serve, we would come into more issues. Every week, we have a sub report, or we have foods that are marked out, and that's about anywhere from six to eight pages currently, and that's why sometimes our menu has to change throughout the month, so that was another concern. But, the last thing that I wanted to talk about is, our adult meals are three dollars and twenty-five cents. I feel like that is an excellent price for our teachers and staff in the district. We have not increased since I've been here, and I don't know how long it was three twenty-five prior to me being here, but I feel like we serve the students and teachers and adults at great prices as it is. And I just feel like that would, that would just, I don't know, that, it'd be hard. We love the teachers and staff that eat with us, we have a great support system from our teachers and staff, and we appreciate them so much. And we appreciate all the students and all the board members that come and eat. But, those were just a few things, obviously, as a federally funded program, we cannot do it, but those were some other concerns that I have as well. But, thank you all for your support, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Chairman, if you don't, if you don't mind, I can just cut this real quick, since I was the one that asked for it to start with, and it's on the agenda. I mean, that's pretty clear that there's a, we don't wanna violate federal law anywhere. Now, I will say, I appreciate your diligence with that, and Mr. Normal as well, and the facts and figures on it. And don't want there to be any misunderstanding, now, I think that y'all do a magnificent job, but it's nothing like that. All that I was looking for was just maybe one more little small thing that we can do for our employees, and, and the comment was made, that probably one or two wouldn't even, it wouldn't be more than one or two anyway, but it didn't matter to me, the number. I, I was just asking, again, just for some little small, something else, trying to search for something else that we can do with respect to our employees. Now, obviously, I won't withdraw that, Mr. Chairman, since we don't violate federal laws, and I, I was aware of that. Thank you for your diligence on that, and the job you do with everything else.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you like that, you can do it.
I mean, I had some costs and things figured, but it needs to come.
I mean, if we're, we're violating federal laws, we're not gonna ask you that.
No, Naomi speaking.
More, any more discussion about it? If not, let's move on, we've got a, uh, school board retreat, that's what we do every year. We all meet here for eight hours, and we need to get some time set up.
I'll read it.
I'll read it, that's where we look at you. Pardon?
Yeah, we waited to the.
Yeah, we waited to the last.
It runs June to July, I think, we waited, it was on the tail end, so now, we're in a new season, so now, we're ready to go again.
What do y'all think about Ms. Tracy getting some dates together from starting? What are y'all thinking?
I think you should start that with snow, that's our problem last.
Yeah, the snow, what?
I say, I say start like March, first date.
I like January, February, March, it's all right in there.
You know, let her see if you get a couple of dates next month.
Yeah, start getting a couple of dates.
Talk about a couple, in January, couple, February, couple, March. It's, right, and that won't get us, that won't get us into a situation that it would be, y'all, runs to the last minute, then.
Is there any, any days of the week that's terrible for somebody that way, she know?
On Mondays, I just.
Mondays.
Thursdays.
Thursdays.
Thursdays are bad for me.
So, Wednesdays, Thursdays? Yeah.
Yeah. If we try to get it on a board meeting day, that probably messes everybody. Look, see what kind of dates they got.
Tuesdays would be good.
Tuesdays would be good for everybody, yeah.
Hey, go ahead, I'm, I'm, I got something I want to ask you for that we have.
Uh, let me, uh, we finish this up, and then we'll get, get you, Marty. So, we got all that handled, uh, everybody's had a chance to look at their board policies for July, have reviewed all of that. Uh, do we need any executives just session?
We don't, going back just a little bit, I did check during the discussion, one point two hundred does say your board officers are eligible for reelection. I'll make sure all the policies are consistent.
Okay, okay.
Certainly don't think it did anything.
Okay, all right. Uh, no executive session, so, Marty?
I mentioned this earlier, and I know, but have we looked any more into electronic voting, vote casting?
I have, Marty, I will, I, I just hadn't, I, I'd actually forgot.
I know you're busy.
I'm sorry, I, I. Oh, thanks, I know Wilson County does it, and I'll see how they, how they do their stuff.
Is anything for anybody else? If not, I have a motion to adjourn.
So, move it.
Second.
Second. All in favor?